By turn.
See this, fellas? I even brand it as unreal.
Follow us, meeting order. Went from on free drive for the flat.
But allegiance to the flag in the United States of America. And super really bothering. It's just fans, one nation.
Uh, roll call, please.
Councilman Flue.
Here.
Councilwoman Beck, here. Councilman Jacob Flute.
Here.
Councilman Jerry Flute.
Here.
Mayor Davis.
Here. Does everyone have a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
There any questions, additions, or changes to the agenda? Is that going to motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Oh, in favor?
Alright.
Oppose? Okay, we'll move on to approval of last meetings of regular minutes, April eighteenth, two thousand and three, twenty-three, excuse me. Any changes, additions, corrections?
Nope.
By the motion to approve the minutes from the last page.
I'll make a motion.
Then a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Oppose? Okay. Going to the financial statement approval of bills and deposits, uh. Like we have deposits in the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-six cents. Accounts payable are thirty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Payroll is thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Transmittals are forty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and three cents. Are there any question about the bills, deposits? Well, the motion to approve paying the bills and allowing the deposits.
Make a motion.
Then a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to correspondence. Marine?
Um, first, we received an order granting transfer of private for Rock Creek. Uh, last year, we asked that these impact funds go to the police department for overtime. And so we're expecting to get forty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. I'm not sure when they will be starting up, but. I heard they were just starting soon.
You should have got. This is the Rock Creek. This is the other one. What this is, is an order from Industrial Society. Telling you that they approved the sales of those. Which was developed by any inventor can be done on a nasal.
Right.
Or, so your impact assistance would be for the upcoming Rock Creek one and two projects. This is the rebuild.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, so that, that's coming this, this summer. They should start construction probably in June.
Okay. And then second is when twenty-twenty-three voting delegates, we need to vote on. Or we need to decide who will get to vote at this summer convention. So we need, um. To figure out a official voting delegate and then alternate. Out of the people we will be seeing there.
So have a volunteer to be the vote voting delegate if we need to.
You, you talking to us two old retired guys?
No, you. So as far as I'm, the last account I had was Mike and Jacob.
Oh, Mike and Jacob.
Yeah, that's. The only ones that streets out. Do you have a, a motion to make a nomination? Can somebody please nominate somebody for voting delegate?
I'll nominate Jacob.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, before we are voting delegates.
We're counting on you.
And Mike will be our.
You guys are welcome.
Commissioner Jones, thank you for clarifying this on this. Um, this transfer from man from Rock Creek. Hey, next on the agenda will be Chair of Alex Bocken with. Please come forward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Happy evening. Thank you for having me. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Alex Bocken. I am your Carbon County Sheriff. And what I'm aiming to do right now, within the first six months of my term, is to go around all the municipalities, introduce myself at the council meetings. And then just give kind of brief departmental updates as far as what we're working on and what you can expect to see from us in the future. One of the things I'm most proud of that we were able to accomplish relatively quickly was a school resource officer program in School District One. Unfortunately, that's not Saratoga, that's Rawlins and Little Snake River Valley. So I was able to hire a deputy specifically to stay in the schools. That's their primary duty. And that position's largely funded by District One, so we're really incurring no extra expense at the county level. He came knows of a lot of previous experience, so that was a big win for the county overall. Hopefully, we can staff a second SRO with District Two. Um, this is a long-term goal, so we'll see when that comes to fruition, if it does. Secondly, we were down seven positions in January. These are sworn positions for both our detention division and our patrol division. Since taking office in January, we've hired five new deputies. We've implemented a little tougher hiring standards than in the past, so we're being fairly selective on who we're hiring. We want to build a good office that represents the county well. We've actually turned down a considerable amount of applicants, but we have hired five. We're down two right now in our detention division. Other than that, we're actually fairly close to being fully staffed. Which is excellent. It makes my life a lot easier and it helps give the county better coverage as well. Thirdly, and I'm glad Pat Walliser is here. We obtained a search and rescue Hagland, as I'm sure you're all aware of. It's a tracked rescue vehicle. Uh, Pat was instrumental in obtaining that vehicle, as were the county commissioners. So, Pat, while you're here, thank you. I appreciate it. Everyone knows that this winter was an absolute disaster and without that Hagland, I, I don't like to think of where we would have been. It was deployed easily over ten times, would you say, Pat? Both on the mountain, Rawlins, Bear Oil, the interstate. It was all over the place. So it was a tough winter. That equipment came in at a great time, so we're very thankful for that. We've been altering our schedule a little bit. Uh, we used to run a six-on, three-off. We changed our jail to a four-on, four-off, twelve-hour shifts. This has helped alleviate the staffing shortages that we've experienced previously. And it also helps with that twenty-four-hour coverage for detention center. We're currently exploring that for our patrol division as well, just to help cover the county a little better. We have eight thousand square miles of county and ten municipalities, so coverage can be a little difficult sometimes. That's why we're exploring some alternate methods that might work a little better. We did replace our dispatch consoles in the county. Um, Chief Mike Morris will be exceed. Tried to say receive and accept at the same time. Will be both accepting and receiving. Our previous dispatch consoles are Motorola C fifty-five hundreds. Don't ask me what all that entails. I'm not a tech guy and I just know that we needed new ones. And we're working on creating a Carbon County opioid prevention task force. With some elected officials and the county attorney. This is in the very inception phase, so it really hasn't taken off yet. I'm a firm believer in that if you're going to do something, it's better to do it slowly and properly the first time. If I'm scrambling something together and hoping for the best, so I will keep everyone updated as that progresses. And if anyone has any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to field any questions.
Is, uh, Tracy Young involved with your opioid?
She will be, yes.
Okay.
I know she's been working a lot with the Prevention Network.
Yes.
So she's a wealth of resources.
Yes.
Yeah, and unfortunately opioids, the presence isn't decreasing anytime soon.
No.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just your, what is the goal? And I wasn't at the meeting for the emergency when we flood. What's going to happen? What are the sheriffs going to do? I couldn't say when we flood, I mean, the potential.
Knock on wood, yeah. Uh, so right now, we're going to commit to assisting our Office of Emergency Management with mitigating the flood. Um, I don't know if you know Lenny Lehman, he's our emergency manager for the county. He's done an awesome job. At flood preparation, mitigation, and potential fallout. So basically, whatever resources he needs from us. We'll just have him tell us what to do and we'll help him out as needed. And you guys are looking better than a little snake right now, so there's that.
Yeah.
When are we gonna get to see the Hagland?
So hopefully not anytime soon, because that means it's not on a search and rescue. But we can arrange a public showing of the Hagland. We tried to do it this winter, but it seemed like we were deploying it every single weekend. So it never actually got to be seen by the public because it was constantly being utilized. Um, which is a good thing because we used it for what we got it for, but it was also a bad thing because it meant we were constantly on searches.
What is the Hag?
So Hagland is a tract. Uh, do you know what a snowcat is?
Yes.
It's like a super duper snowcat. So instead of a single cab, it's got two cabs that are connected. And you can fit up to, what is it, Pat, fourteen, seventeen people in it? It's got inline six turbo diesel engine. So it's a lot faster than our old snowcats and it runs a lot better. It's a lot more reliable. Yeah, it's. Let's call him captain from now on.
He's gonna have packs and great.
I'm gonna pay for that on that later. Is there anything else? Uh, thank you, Council. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to council comments. Any comments tonight from the council?
Nope.
Okay. We'll move on to reports from departments and we're gonna. Uh, change this around just a little bit tonight. We're gonna go with the Saratoga Airport Advisory Board. Uh, fully brought in is Arm Armstrong. They're the engineers that's over the airport board. Or they're over the airport. They do all the funding with grants, the managing part of the grants. Uh, helping us find money for the airport, pretty much managing that portion of the airport. So I'll turn it over to these gentlemen right here.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Um. You throwing us for a loop because you had us at the end of the agenda, but jump up here now.
Yeah, well, you guys come from a long way off and I thought I might give you a little faster start home.
Not that we're trying to run you out of town or anything, but.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Good to hear something.
Well, my name is Mike Backoff. I am, um, professional engineer with, uh, Armstrong. I've been, uh, doing airport consulting for almost twenty years now. Grew up in, uh. Uh, around aviation and around airports and it's kind of my thing. It always has been. I'm a. I went to University of Wyoming and I might found up, wound up back in Wyoming all these years laters again and, uh, and I'm, uh. This is what I do. You know, I'm taking care of airports, uh, designing runway projects and doing airport planning. Um. I serve you guys as being basically the technical guy that takes care of. Making sure that we, any project that's taken care of gets designed properly. That I take care of, um, dealing with the FAA on your behalf, um. Grant management, we make sure, I make sure that gets taken care of. And, uh, I'll be heading up the master plan project that we're going to be starting out this summer, later this summer.
Jesse. Uh, my name is Jesse Fabula. I'm with Armstrong Consultants. Um, I'm a client manager. So, you know, when you guys selected Armstrong, um, uh, this last summer, basically. You, you, you got three bodies that you're gonna see predominantly. One's the Instagram Mike, one's the client manager, me. Um, and there's also a planner back at headquarters that helps you guys out. And so as a client manager, you know, basically my role is to basically backfill behind Mike. But also, as you guys know, there's constant things going on at your airport that might not be related directly to like an active construction project. So as a client manager, I'm kind of here as a resource, um, for maybe someone on the council or maybe someone at the town office or maybe someone out of the airport. To kind of deal with those things that come up throughout the year at the airport. So I'm your client manager. Um. Mike, can I put, uh, uh, in your packet, um, just the, the core functions of. Uh, what we wanted to hit on tonight and then quickly get to the point where we could answer you guys' questions. So. So that first page is just what we just said right there, just our introductions. Um, it's actually the very end of your packet. So if you want, just turn your packet over, you can see what I was looking at. But the next piece we put in there was just a quick overbill, overview of your airport, um. And, you know, we just kind of wanted to highlight a couple of things on your airport just for you guys, uh, for your education on that part. So. You know, obviously, um, uh, Shelly Fields Public Youth Airport, it's a general aviation airport here in Saratoga, Wyoming. Um, the airport serves a variety of general aviation needs. We use that word generally aviation quite a bit and that refers to basically any airport or any aircraft that's not charter service or tickets that you can buy online, right? So, um, there's a variety of different uses that fall into that category. Um, and you guys at this airport here locally, I mean, you see, um, DA traffic, you see small and medium jet traffic. You even see some charter operations coming into your airport and you see fractional ownership, um, and large private jet traffic moving in airport, variety of different, uh, aircraft coming in. Um, and all of those things, um, you know, as airports, a community asset. Um, you know, all of that traffic, you know, it kind of falls into a couple of different things. That's a, a community asset that your, your community has. Um, it's an economic driver for the town and the county and the region. Um, and it's used, utilized by local residents, visitors, um, and tourists alike. So those are the quick things we wanted to ship on, um, the airport. You know, and, but what we really want to nail down here is that town of Saratoga, you guys are the sponsor of the airport. And you guys are the ultimate authority over your airport. We just want to make sure that. Council understands that, that, that the FAA and YDOT Aeronautics. They look to you guys to be that ultimate authority over your airport. And so Mike and I really do work for you guys. Um, and that's where we get our marching orders from. Uh, and we, we joke often too, because a lot of our clients will ask for something that's, um. Outlandish. Hey, go tell the FAA to pay for this. We say, well, I don't think they're gonna pay for it, but we'll go down there and ask for it. Uh, because that's really our role. Our role is to advise you, um, and help you make your goals and ambitions of the airport come true. Um, and of course, when you turn around to your funding agencies to ask for funds to make those things happen. Inevitably, there's a line in the sand where they'll pay for it or they won't pay for it. Um, but we're really your advocates on lining up that funding, but then also making those projects happen. Um. This is a quick note, you know, YDOT Aeronautics, um, is a big supporter of your airport. Um, and they have really, um, been instrumental. Um, they participated on a call just, uh, few and a half months ago.
Yeah, we had, yeah, we had, uh, actually, we had Christie up in the FAA. She. She made sure to be in on that. And of course, Christie worked for YDOT a lot of years before she went to the feds. And, uh, she's been watching over this airport for a lot of years and she's very interested in seeing. You know, positive things for this airport.
You know, and that last bit there is, you know, as the sponsor of an airport, there's a little bit of tricky business here. You know, it's a community asset that you have and the way that airports work is. Um, it's basically open to the public, the flying public to use, right? And one of your responsibilities of owning a airport is to maintain it to meet the needs of the users. But to be honest, your airport is attracting users that are very, uh, unique and different than your typical GA airport. And so you guys have done a wonderful job of keeping up your asset to meet the needs of the users you have coming into here to Saratoga. And so that's just something I want to, you know, commend you guys on. Um, but that is also a challenge that you have in front of you in the future. Um, uh, the people that visit your community, that the traffic, the jet traffic that visits your community is different than what we see in other places throughout the state. That's at a different level. Um, that's just something for you.
Yeah, this, what's happening with Saratoga Airport is more in line with what's happening, say, like down at Rifle, Colorado or Talos, New Mexico. It's. It's definitely not Grable or Powell or Newcastle. That's in, that the FAA and YDOT Aeronautics, they all recognize that.
Is there any questions at that point? Um, the, the next section that Mike I hit on is talking about the grants and the funding. So do, is there any questions outside of grant funding? Do you guys want?
Question, question from the public.
Do you consider that grant assurance number twenty-two and twenty-three how it affects? Our airport in a hangar owner? Could you educate possibly the council on how other airports handle, uh, private hangar owners?
No, so airports do a variety of different things, um, at their airfield. Um, and so like we said, you guys are the ultimate authority on that. Um, but every single year that you move forward with the airport and initially when the airport was first founded. Generally, there is money being given to the town or oftentimes when the airport's founded, there's land being given to ground. And, and, and there's grant assurances that come along with those funds. And so basically, when the FAA gives you money to do a big project, they give you that year's list of promises. And so those are grant assurances. Um, and I can't go into depth right now on all those different assurances, but that's something that you guys will see anytime you move through a big project. Um, and they're numbered, um, and they have a variety of different obligations in there. Um, and aviation is unique in terms of government funding, uh, structures. Um, and there's some unique promises in there. Um, so one of those promises in there basically is. An airport is meant for aviation use. And those people that use the airport are meant to pay their own way. They're meant there to support. The aviation. So for example, when you get a grant from the FAA, it's actually not coming from the general fund of the federal government. It's coming from the FAA trust fund, which is a taxing mechanism. It's taxed on all flying public. So th- there's a couple of promises in there that, um, are unique in the fact that. The flying public is paying this money into the aviation trust fund. And every time you're in the airport and you're flying over the skies, there's a level of confidence saying, the FAA saying. Everywhere down there, there are safe and reliable airports for you to land on if you need to, right? And so there's that promise in there. And so, um, a little bit deeper than, there are some promises related to hangers. Um, and I won't go any deeper than that tonight. Um, but we would gladly come back to one of your airport board meetings and walk you guys through those grant assurances. Um, and like all things in that category of compliance, there's different levels of compliance that you have to hit at different times. Um, and, uh, uh, the FAA is always there to call in and say, hey, help us fix, work through this specific local issue and they'll do that. There was one other question.
Uh, yes, you talked about the master plans for the airport this summer. Types of thing you see at this point.
That's a great question and Mike will hit that.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna lead into that.
At the end. Um, so we'll keep, keep track of that question, but, um. So. Move on to the, kind of the next section, which is that, that third page in, in your guys' packet, which is, uh, grant funding and, and the annual CIP process. Um, and so I'm just gonna kind of quickly peruse what's in your packet, just so you guys can see. Um, so the FAA grants come in several forms. Um, so typically, um, we use the word AIP. That stands for Airport Improvement Grants. This is a grant that, um, your guys' airport receives every single year. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's only for capital projects. Um, and oftentimes, we'll bundle that money, um, and save it up for a couple of years to do a slightly larger project. Um, but there are also our other grants, uh, grants, uh, mechanisms that the FAA has. There's competitive grants. So you might hear the words supportment or discretionary grants. Um, and then there's a few uncommon grants that came out over the period of COVID. So I won't go into too much detail. But we're here to be your guys' grants experts and help you map out what funding's available to you in the future. And then we basically take those chunks of money and say, hey, here's the money that's available to you going forward. Now, what's the mechanism that we hold in our hand to talk about how we're gonna use that money? Well, that's your capital improvement plan, your CIP. Um, and that capital improvement plan I'll go into in a second here, but Mike, I'll let you hit on YDOT's role.
It's a YDOT Aeronautics Division. They. They match most of the grants that come from the FAA with, um, six percent, because all your FAA grants are gonna be ninety percent match grants. So you, it's up to you guys as the sponsor to come up with a meaning ten percent. Wyoming's lucky in the fact that YDOT Aeronautics is able to cover six percent of that. You, you guys, it's four percent that you actually have to come up with. Um, in years past, YDOT Aeronautics had a huge budget, ten, eleven million dollars a year. But those days are long past because of just how things have gone in the state with, you know, mineral royalties, suburbs taxes, those kind of things. So they used to some, you know. Uh, fund huge projects, huge major projects that they would fund as a, like, were seventy-five, twenty-five percent grants or something like that, but they don't do that anymore. So what they do do. Is six percent match on your FAA grants and then they do the, um. Payment maintenance projects to help maintain, um, do seal codes, crack seal, repaint all of the runways in the state. They do. Do those as well. Oh, also, they don't, they provide grants for NAVAIDS like the, um, weather station out here at the airport. Um, those things have to be certified and there is a pretty rigorous maintenance program that comes along with that. That's about. Uh, five to six thousand dollars a year to keep it going and the state gives you guys a grant for that to help take care of that as well.
So you'll hear us talking as we come to airport board meetings and, and kind of get you updated for the coming years' projects. We'll be talking about grants and those matches. Um, when it's typically, when it's a bigger FAA project, uh, the town of Saratoga or the airport fund in this case. Um, is gonna be basically paying that four percent because FAA is ninety, state's six, you guys locally here four. Some of those smaller grants where it's like a maintenance of a piece of equipment, that's usually a YDOT grant and that's usually ninety percent YDOT money, ten percent. So kind of moving down on to what a CIP is, I did not bring you guys, um. A big lengthy CIP. There is a lengthy CIP that you guys have posted with YDOT Aeronautics. It's in a system called Black Cat. Um, I just gave you the front page of that, that, uh, CIP right there. It just so happens that you guys are at that stage in life where you, the airport is due for another master plan. Um, a master plan is, um, a federally required document that's tied to those grant assurances. And it's basically, the FAA says, listen. We're gonna give you this money every single year, but you're in return, you're gonna promise to us that you're spending the money on the right construction projects. At the right time for your airport and you're putting it in the right place. Um, frankly, in the old days, people would put the wrong infrastructure in the wrong place and then come back ten years later to the FAA and say, hey, well, I need to move this. It's in the wrong place. So the CIP and the master plan, that's the tool that the FAA looks to, to say. The next ten years, the next twenty years, they're mapped out. It's not a guarantee of the growth you're gonna see, but it's what the FAA looks at and says, alright. You guys have fully thought through all the things that could occur. In the next twenty years and you've thought of the right place to put them. So when you come and ask for one individual item. We know it's going in the right place on the airfield. So the CIP is, is closely related to that. And so that CIP shows your next, uh, ten years worth of projects. So your CIP today. Um, I don't want to say it's outdated. But the next project you have on your CIP is your master plan. That'll be in, start at twenty, end of twenty-three and go through twenty-four and even a little bit twenty-five. That's, that plan will take. And at the end of that plan. The, the future projects after that, they're all gonna shift. So what you see on that little cutout of your current CIP. Anything that's passed that master plan are up for negotiation. I don't want to say negotiation, up for, uh, input and interpretation and reevaluation. So if you have a CIP, those list projects goes all the way out, um, on, in the Black Cat program, goes all the way up thirty years. But that order of projects is gonna change because that's what a master plan is. It's that time where you say pause. And you look at all the way out twenty years and you map out all these projects. Um, and then each year, um, you know, priorities change in terms of the order and the operation of. And then each year, you know, priorities change in terms of the order and the operation of these different projects. So each year in the fall, you update your CIP and that's really focusing on the next five years. And so that's your mechanism to go back to the FAA and YDOT and say, here's the projects we anticipate to do in the next five years. It's usually only one or two. And here's the order and here's what we're thinking the cost is. And here's the state share, here's the local share and here's the FAA match. And yes, we have enough money or no, we don't have enough money. So that's really what that's, that five-year CIP is. It's your mechanism to plan for the future and then communicate those financial needs to the funding agencies. There are a question on the CIP, the CIP is kind of a big deal, but.
I had a question, but you answered.
What, what was that question?
If, if those priorities change as you got into the new master plan. What I was going to ask you, how they do.
The master plan will, will lay out all the options. And it will, it will give an order, but you're not, you're not, you're not chained to that order of projects. Because you guys are the authority and things can change over a 20-year planning period. So you can change and just look at your five-year window and say, oh, wow, this failed a lot faster. This asphalt failed a lot faster than we anticipated. Let's move it up in the schedule. Sure. You would change that on your five-year CIP. I mean, we.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why we have the board and on the, on the board, there's pilots and so they, you know, so that really helps out too.
Well, to move along, Mike, I'll let you just jump into.
Okay, well, what is the master plan? We kind of led into that and I just want to hit some of the bullet points of some of the specific goals of the master plan. Like write a graphic representation of the existing airport features, development and anticipated land use. Uh, establish realistic schedule for the implementation of the proposed development, to identify a realistic financial plan to support the development, to validate a plan technically and procedurally through the investigation of concepts and alternatives on technical, economic and environmental grounds. Pair and present a plan to the public that adequately addresses all relevant issues and satisfies local, state and federal regulations. And basically to establish a framework for continuing the planning process through, you know, even further into the future past the master plan. Why is it being conducted? Well, every seven to 10 years, the FAA wants to have these things done. That's the short answer. The long answer kind of is that the master plan that was last done for this airport was woefully inadequate in our opinion. It's about half an inch thick and the master plan for an airport like this should have way more content in it than the one that was performed in 2014. And quite frankly, the conditions have changed since 2014. The amount of traffic that we're seeing out here has increased greatly. And the needs of, of what the airport needs, it's changed. And there's been more call for runway extension, which is a monumental undertaking at this airport. The last master plan just kind of glazed over it and said basically that this runway is eighty, a hundred feet right now, but to extend it, we would have to, well, let me back up a second. The existing runway is too steep and the FAA has granted a modification of standards for it. It's two percent grade is the maximum grade and it's about two and a half percent. So the FAA would not allow to extend this runway on a, or make an extension on a runway that has already got an exemption on it for being too steep. So in order to extend it, the far end, like the, that southwest end of the runway would need to come down between forty and fifty feet, which is an incredible amount of, of dirt that would need to be moved. So there are some other things we're going to look at during the process, this process to see if there's any way around this. And to actually quantify, is it really worth doing or not? And, and, and it just, it needs to be more than just a, well, it doesn't meet standards and we can't make it meet standards. So no, I mean, there needs to be more put into it than that, and that's what we intend to do.
And I think that Mike's had a really good point there that you guys remember is now your last master plan was finished up in 2014. And you guys have seen such a drastic change in users of the airport. And that's, you know, that is one of those grand assurances, those promises that you're going to, you're going to maintain the asset for the users that are using it. And that those users are going to pay their way, right? So that's, that's the FAA in this case paying for this master plan. And so the FAA, that's why they participated on that call of the airport board a couple of months back. They're really eager to get down and think through all the possible alternatives for your guys' airport to meet the users. And of course, in every single one of those scenarios, one of those possible solutions is maintaining it as standard. And so you have to remember that when you look at a master plan, it's a 20-year forward-looking document. And it's a document that explores, Michael, go into this in a minute, an alternative sections where it lays out several different alternatives of ways to approach or solve the issues you might come across in the future. So, so the, the next section in the packet there is, how much does it cost and who pays for it? So, you know, in general, when we look at master plans, they range from a couple hundred thousand dollars all the way to a million dollars, depending on the size of the airport. One thing that's going to happen here as we move close to the end of the year, Armstrong, we're going to come up with a scope of work. Mike's actually already done this. We've already worked it through the mayor and the, the, the airport board, describing every element that the master plan is going to include. And once the FAA here locally in YDOT, all everyone approves, hey, this is what that project's going to look like. Then the next step is the independent fee estimate. And that's where town, the airport board reaches out to an independent third party and gets a fee set. Armstrong comes with a fee set and we all meet together and we come down and price this project. At that point, we'll really kick off this master plan process. And like we said earlier, ninety percent will come from the FAA, six percent will come from YDOT. And then that last four percent will come from the airport. And so right now that's how that will stand. And so that's what that mobile point there is on.
That's, that funding will have to come out in twenty-three?
No, actually it's going to saddle your guys' fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five.
Okay.
And actually I was, I was meeting with your staff earlier today, kind of talking through, working on some, cleaning up some budget things and figuring out how we wanted to show that. And that's what I'm basically thinking. And it might be 10 grand.
We don't need to make sure we've got four percent of this cost in it for the.
Not, not in your current fiscal year. Yeah.
Moving on to what will you guys get as a part of the master plan? I'll just go through the eight highlights here. Pre-planning, the pre-planning process, which includes an initial needs determination and development of study design, negotiation, consulting contract and application of study of funding for this thing we've just been talking about. Public involvement, once a project starts, public involvement program is begun to identify and document key issues for various stakeholders and solicit input. Uh, environmental considerations. Uh, clear understanding of the environmental requirements needed to move forward with proposed projects in the recommendations. Existing conditions, we'll take an inventory of all the existing conditions on the airport. Aviation forecast, the forecast aeronautic demand for short, medium and long-term timeframes. This is very important, the, the forecast of what the air traffic is going to look like, that drives everything. That's if, if, if we, if we screw that up, if your master plan has the potential to, you may, you may overdesign. You may have a master plan for something that's just completely unrealistic. I've seen it happen. And other times the forecast might be good. Then there's an event that changed everything and all of a sudden forecast go, the operation count goes way up and it skews everything. Facility requirements, uh, the facility requirements, that is driven by our forecast. And so we've got a lot of traffic coming and going. We need different facilities are going to need to, we're going to need bigger aprons. We're going to need a longer runway. We're going to need a terminal that can handle fifty people coming and going at one time. Alternatives, development and evaluation. So one of the things we'll all take a look at is different alternatives for each one of these conditions out here. And like Jesse was saying, the, the, there's different ways to skin a cat basically. And what's going to be, we'll take a look at the pros and cons of each one and, and determine which one is the best with the input from the technical advisory committee.
You know, and, and I'll add a little to that, you know, a, a master plan is not like a set in stone blueprint saying that you will do this and you will do this as you march through these 20 years. Absolutely not. It is a document that helps you think through the development and the changes at your airport as they become necessary and demanded by you, the airport sponsor. So that's really important because lots of times you, you, you can flip through the master plan and find a nice picture of what might happen out there and go, oh my gosh, we're going to build all this. And the answer is no. If you wanted to build all this, this is what it would look like. And this is where you would put it. It's not a mandatory, we are going to build this. It's, well, here's how we think we're going to grow. And if we grow like this, how will it change? And then here's option two, if we grow like this, this is how it will change. And of course, option, option zero or one is we just stay right where we're at. So that's something really important to remember. If you're not locked in, you're not committing to doing these things. You're exploring what these would look like if you chose or were, if you needed to.
Question. So FAA doesn't, like say, if so many planes are flying in and out here, so many people, this is what you have to do. What you have to update this, the way it's got to be done. You see what I'm saying?
No, not, not really.
You're saying, you're talking about a master plan. But there's not a criteria or something implemented by the FFA or the FAA that says if you're going to move this many planes and this many people through.
Yes, there are.
Need this criteria.
Yes, there are designer criteria in the, the advisory circular for airport design that will drives how wide the runway needs to be, how long runway needs to be, how the separation between the runway and the parallel taxiway. There are, those items are driven by, by the traffic, the traffic count and the size of traffic. So yes, there are, there are things that the FAA will stipulate that if you're going to be a, a C2, for example, well, a category C2 facility, you will have a 400-foot runway separation from center line of runway and center line taxiway. So there are things that they will.
So it goes by the way you're rated then?
Yes.
But so, so as that traffic changes, right? That traffic is going to top out at your facility requirements, right? And so then if you wanted to expand, your only option to expand it needed to be this. But you're still have the option just to stay the way you are.
You're not forced.
See, so the FAA is never going to show up and say, you will do this. The FAA will show up and say, well, we're not going to pay for anything because the most important thing is, is this. So, so there, there is a difference there between the implementation of those design standards. Absolutely. So your facility is, is what your facility is, the hills around it or the hills around it. Yeah. Elevation is the elevation. I mean, you guys have some restraints. It's just mother nature imposed.
So will they put a cap on how many planes can come in and out?
No, 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 no. And so the master plan will really look at those options and how that will go forward and give you a solid understanding of what those things look like. And how do I say this? Lots of master plans have components in them that are never realized or never seen as priorities from the funding agencies. So the FAA will frequently say, yes, that is absolutely correct. A build out of this particular airport, but that is not a priority from the state or the FAA priority side. And we're not going to push and we're not going to pay for it. If you guys were to build it, go for it, but we're, so there is that level of that master plan also is that function for the FAA to say, this is the proper expansion. That expansion is not yet a priority on our side of the fence. As you, as projects get bigger, you go into the competitive reactionary category of funding. It's not a guarantee. And so the FAA will say, well, that's not.
Yeah.
But the funding will continue like it does normally if we need to repair.
Absolutely, yes.
That part won't change.
Yeah, that part won't change.
So all this comes together in our airport. You have questions, sir?
I'm kind of curious. Master plan for a bigger airport in an ever-growing town in which you've got more town on that side and this side and that end already. And I drive out to the, in my daily life, I drive out to the airport quite a bit or to the landfill. And they come right over the top of, right of that new subdivision and right beside the two over here. It, I know it's in the middle of town and it's always been in the middle or on the edge of town. Now it's kind of getting in the middle of town. Is there any plan or any, how do you address that?
Well, that's a good question. The, if you, if, in some cases you do a site, if, if it gets to be a problem where an airport is located and if it's too encroached or if, if, if the city is encroaching around it, you look at moving it. But that's a, that's a monumental undertaking.
We do know what it's like when it's really busy every fall and September, when the conquistadors come to town. It's amazing and it travels windows for weeks.
Imagine it does.
And I'm not opposed to it. I have no dog in this race, but I guess I wonder.
Yeah, that kind of goes back to our first comment when we reminded you guys that you're the authority over your airport. And then when we reminded you what our role is as your consultant you hired. We really come to you guys looking for marching orders, right? And we come to you to explain the obligations that you have as owning and operating an airport. So that type of concern or those type of questions, I don't want to say we don't have answers for, but we kind of turn our gaze this way. Because we're really here to come to counsel. And, and, and there's a variety of different solutions to all those types of questions. And we're here to help execute your guys' plans and goals for your airport because it's truly your airport. There are questions?
Well, and I'm also kind of, what Richard was saying, ba- basically is like 2016, we had a master plan from town, 2016. Nothing has happened.
I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon, stuff has happened. It's a master plan.
Okay. That statement can be applied to other master plans at other airports where you do this big planning study and, and you say, well, what have you done? Well, nothing yet. Well, the upside of that scenario is, well, good, then your master plan is still accurate and it's still projecting what could happen in the future. It's still a plan that helps you understand if you needed to move in these directions, this is how it would be built out. If you needed to expand to this, this is what, where you would expand it. And so it lays those things out. You know, something that is here locally that is a question that came with last airport board, someone wanted to build a hangar, but they didn't know where the next hangar was, was going to go. So that's a very tangible piece that the master plan addresses. It says, well, the next person that builds a hangar, it could go here, here, here. And here's the different sizes that fit. And if it was this size, well, maybe it would have to go over here, that type of layout. Now, it doesn't mean that someone's going to show up and want to build that building, but at least you know where to put it on the day they show up and they're ready to sign that lease. So that last picture on the graph, which is, is this piece right here, that is just a graphic representation of everything we talked through. And those are just the chapters that the master plan covers. And this is dictated by the FAA and the FAA says, hey, you're going to hit all these different sections. And so that's just a nice piece to kind of, for you guys to look at. And you'll see more of this as we get closer to this project kicking off.
That's, that's kind of it. That's a, that's a good, good start on it. So you guys have some good questions out there.
When do you think the master plan, I believe October was your date, that you were going to kick it off?
We, I, I think we're going to try and get kicked off ahead of that.
Are you?
Yeah, at least get our first, the kickoff meeting and get our technical advisory committee together.
Oh, I see.
Ahead of that.
Okay.
I know that Mr. Lad singer is very, very eager to get this thing moving.
So, you know, and, and for anyone that wants to keep track of this, uh, we've attended the airport board meetings here, uh, either in person or by Zoom. And that will just kind of be a standing airport board agenda item is airport master plan update, where we will talk about the next kind of action items that are taking place as dates start shaping forward. And so that's the place to go to see where we're at in the process and what's upcoming up. And we'll be, we'll be using that platform. And then anytime you guys want to call us back here in front of you, we'd gladly come back, so.
Well, we appreciate it. David, when's the next airport meeting? Do you have it up?
Perfect, next Monday.
For a dog. So anybody that's open to the public, nothing here, the publics can come. So So. You're interested in an airport.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. I think you've been, I gained some out of this. So there's a lot to it, and these guys work with big money, with grants and everything. They manage it. That's what takes time. That's what helps us.
Well, uh, we really appreciate you calling us out. I'm excited to spend a few hours in the office tomorrow morning, um, and so always reach out to us, Mike. So, um, anytime you guys need to see.
All right. Hey, we'll move back to the. To the agenda as the fall, we'll move into reports from departments and we'll move into town hall. Do you want me to cover this or do you? Because the town hall is yours.
I don't know, you wanna speak about sandbag?
Uh, sandbag, we have filled sandbags available for this first, uh. Uh, contact the city hall, you get on the list. Now, we're not gonna deliver them directly to your home. They'll be staged in various locations. In your area, okay? Uh, so like probably people that's calling for me, we dropped off one bundle on, uh, I believe it's second and Tugus. Uh, just off the highway there because a gentleman had requested that quite ways prior to even worrying about high water, but. So we dropped him off some there. Right now, we have not. Next week, we will start using, uh, the county sandbag filler, which we believe we got it last Friday. From, uh, it's been down in bags, so we'll, we'll get to it ahead of time there. Uh, sandbags, uh, that we have on hand have come from the penitentiary in Rollins. We, we brought them over, we're expected to go get another load. And then I wanna thank the town of Encampment, the mayor called down. Uh, I believe it was for the senior. Uh, supported the town, they, and she volunteered for them to fill sandbags, so we hauled down. Some sand and about four hundred sandbags, and I believe they were filled just for days. We just, I haven't heard back from them yet, so I wanna thank the city council and Encampment. On that. Uh, and we'll move on, we're probably gonna, we're watch, we're monitoring the river very closely, this. The snowpack, the snows outside are changing constantly. It's, it come up to about seven foot last night according to, uh. It's right at seven foot last night according to our gauge over here, I was told that by, we looked at it every morning, uh. And probably we're gonna have a volunteer day afternoon or something. Call out to the city and we'll, we'll advertise it for, to kind of help us fill some sandbags. We don't get enough filled with the sandbagging machine, but. And that's pretty much what I have on sandbags. Marie?
Uh, next, I received an email from, um, Senator Loomis's office. And there will be a federal funding summit at Sheridan Collins, June twelve through the fifteenth. And it's a free professional training on identifying, applying for, securing and managing federal funds. Um, we hear directly from the state and federal agencies and towns, cities and counties are encouraged to attend. And registration opens next week, and so, um. I would like to go, um, and so I'd like to ask councils, request your permission to attend.
Uh, I don't have an issue with it. I've spoken with, uh, Senator Loomis's office. A couple of different times about, uh, different items and one of them have been grants. And where to go to and, and the grants could not necessarily stay away from, but be careful with because they work different than. Uh, just your normal grant of sixty forty split or, and, uh, anyway, I think it would be good, uh. I'm gonna open it up. I'm gonna ask the council for a motion to send two people. If we possibly can, but definitely one. I would like to send Marie and possibly another individual.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, something to be noted there, this is all three, we don't have to pay for their travel and hotel rooms, go out there, there.
Well, any of this, do we know, Marie, if this counts towards, uh, the compliance training we're required to do as government employees?
I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm not sure, um, but I'm pretty sure if, if this has to deal with. I mean, this could check off several boxes.
Yeah, I think it'd be worthwhile to know what we're getting credit for.
Yeah.
For that compliance.
Does that start soon?
Yeah.
All right, uh, we'll move on to WAM. J I, or VPIC annual renewal information. So if everybody can find it in their packet. Feels with the insert, Marie, would you go through that?
Sure, um, this is our annual renewal information for our healthcare. Um, currently, we are at a five hundred dollar deductible, um, with dental. And they would say page thirty seven, we must pop this before, um, and also they just go. This is incorrect, they said it's the wrong information, but the next page on thirty eight, that is correct. And so every year we have the menus, um. This is healthcare with all of these counties of the state of Wyoming.
If you look at it, the rates seem to have gone up four percent.
They would go up four percent, yes.
We have asked on that one.
Uh, we need to act on this, submit by May twelve, so yes. I received this much aid tour. It'll really gain very much notice.
Any questions, concern, discussion? It's typical, everything else has gone up, then why not this? As a counter, where we have some employees that are single, some employees that are one adult with children. But kind of varies down to their employees. I guess my question to the council is, if we wanna maintain this coverage for employees. Input?
This is the same they had before.
It is, it's just four percent higher than what we would. I believe the projected revenue that I've been looking at, could be able to cover the four percent increase on that. Typically easy. Did I get a motion to go ahead and pass this accordingly to accept this new insurance paid increase?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, we'll move on. If I find my agenda. Okay, special, uh, event from now. And we have one, if you noticed, we have two undeniable. One for Syracuse today's. That's been settled out, uh. Can read through it.
So there's a representative tonight, um, they did say.
I didn't, okay. Come on up and present your case and tell us what it's all about and we'll go from there.
All right, this is the annual event. Um, Joe Elder usually does all this. He had a spring concert, I guess. Um, every year we get three bands, we get. Like a beginning band, a middle band, and a headliner. This year we have, uh, West King Streams Band out of Ocean City, Maryland. That eighties band out of Denver and Neil McCoy as our headliner. So it's all written down. We're gonna work with, uh, the police department this year, gonna get some barriers to make it a little more safe. A little better security. Tyler and I have been communicating a little bit, so we're gonna have a meeting next week and invite him to that. Um, I think, I'm not exactly sure what Joe put for timeframes, but we start early in the morning, we try to be done by midnight, get all the stuff off the street. Cause it's a big event, bringing in the stage and the sound and all the bands, so. I, I think that's probably what he put down.
Ten AM.
Yeah.
To eleven.
We close it, we close the street at eight, so we can get all the cars off and get the stage set by time.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got a ton of vendors already set up, we had to shut off vendor list because there's so many. It's getting a little bit bigger, you know, you bring in some good music. I think, uh, our headliner this year ran around thirty thousand dollars, so. Back in the day, we started off with, I think, twenty five hundred dollars, so it's getting, you know, real music, so we hope, hope to have a smooth event as usual. You have any questions for us?
You got any questions for us?
Nope.
Do you have any questions?
You might need to meet Jerry Fleety.
No, uh, no, uh, but certainly, um, and we expect and in hand.
Absolutely.
Make sure the event goes smooth and everybody stays safe, and I've got no doubt that'll happen.
And we talked, I talked to Tyler a couple days ago about, uh, and agreed that town has like bans. And we thought it'd be a great idea, so we can get a ban on everybody that's twenty one. So as the police come, you know, someone's got a cup in their beer and they don't have a ban, it's like, well, where's the wristband?
And they look, they're really twenty one.
No, just because it's a free event, people can hit Syracuse, people go to their cars and coolers and all that, which we try to avoid, you know.
Sure.
And spend their money downtown, but that I think will be a great, you know, addition this year for that. And we got barriers, we ordered barriers so that we have a spot between the stage and the people where we've never had before. So, you know, there's the exit, we can keep people away from the stage. I had a lady jump on stage twice last year, I drove her out the second time, so. Better avoid that, ten some, so.
Great. Any other questions, comments, Jim, what's it be?
Um, this year's delight first, it's always close to Saturday to the Fourth of July. And then on the fourth, we also have a band, the American Legion rents the, um, or gets the island. And they give a free barbecue and we have a band that plays over there directly after the parade.
Looks like July first from six to eleven PM, six PM to eleven P.
That, I mean.
The, the whole event lasts from six AM until eleven PM.
Yeah, yeah.
There it goes.
That's, that's what we're trying to close the street, skip cars off and get it in center.
Yes. Any other questions, concerns? Did I get a motion to, uh, pass this application, accept it?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to my real job.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Hey.
Can I get one more motion for street closures?
Oh, yeah, I never saw that. Got a motion to close that, uh, the bridge street between. Highway one thirty and River, South River.
For the street closure.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay.
We need to, the request for waiver of open container as well. We've got that application in our packet.
President, waiver for open containers?
This one I will. Okay.
Okay.
All set, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Hey, we'll move on to the second one. And this is from the yard filled out, and they wanna have. Uh, live music on the third of June from five PM till ten PM. Shannon, do you have anything you need to throw out? I mean, it looks complete to me from what I'm seeing.
Uh, one thing, uh, I used to put noon as a start time, I didn't on this one because we're doing low down and sound checks and whatnot. Gates are actually at five and music's six to ten, so.
What, so the music's gonna start at noon?
Six.
Six.
Yeah, we start doing sound checks in the early afternoon, so I, I typically put the earlier time on it.
So if you wanna change the noon, right?
Yeah.
The setup time?
Yeah.
You had a chance to review this, Mike? Any questions?
Same thing, I'd like to be able to.
The only concern I had was the parking and that was addressed. I think we can cover that. Do I have a motion to approve this application?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Post? Hey, is there anything special we need to add to this one, Marie? There's no street closure.
Go ahead.
Ask a quick question about special events in general.
Sure.
Uh, last year, there were several changes made to the specially permitted events ordinance, five point three. Uh, one of them was that overnight camping, such as on town property like parks and. And, 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 really, in undescribed areas of town was put in and has an allowable special event. It was really left unclear how and where that was gonna work. And I asked Marie last week if she could issue camping permit for that, so she told me I should bring it up with you guys.
All right. So camping is not allowed on town property. The only place you can camp is at the campground.
A lake.
At the lake, and I'm not aware that I could issue any type of permit for camping, um, so I told him to not stay house.
Go ahead.
Well, we tried to get some clarity on this at the third reading of the new ordinance last year. And I specifically asked them if it pertained to Veterans Island, Kathy Booth Park, other areas of town, and. It was strongly intimated, if not outright stated, that yes. Because my point was, if you're gonna allow camping in a town park, then you might wanna designate an area of that park, as it says in our existing ordinance. Right, not to go into too, too deeply right now, but. I guess the question is how, how we're gonna proceed with this being an allowed special event.
The only thing I can do on that, because I'm not aware of any of this, is I'm gonna have to table that for the next meeting. Cause I don't, I would like to read the ordinance that they passed.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, talk with the council about it. And was Kathy on the council at that time when they did that?
I don't know.
I didn't think so. So you're talking a whole, and I, I didn't know that or they had passed the ordinance like that, so. Really, Chris, I can't answer that.
I didn't really expect an answer. I just thought that the issue needed to be brought up so we could give some clarity.
Yeah.
What would you tell people?
Marie will make note of that, we'll pull the ordinance, uh, and we'll get it out to everybody and then we can see where it stands. And we can open that for discussion at the next meeting.
Um, just to throw it out there, we kind of brought up the idea before all these changes were made in a workshop. Would have been beneficial to everybody concerned regarding all these issues around special events and whatnot. So I'll just throw that out there as an idea too.
All right, we can definitely take, I'll take a look at it and see what, how it was wrote and what put in it. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on? Okay, we'll move on to, uh. Uh, the emergency order, ordinance, and I'm doing this on an emergency basis, I'm. I'm gonna ask the council, uh, we better do a budget amendment. So I would like a motion from somebody to do this emergency ordinance.
What's it for?
We better change our budget from last year, and I can do it on an emergency basis where we don't have to have three readings. I'm asking for this to be an emergency reading so we can pass this new ordinance, because we've gotta adjust the budget a little bit. In one area, one area specifically, is what that's about. And the only way we can do it, we can either do is ask GOAT on the emergency ordinance, or we have to do it. With three readings and with this going into the new budget. And what is you, I would prefer not to do it that way. I talked with Kylie, uh, the town attorney, she said, yes, we can do this. It's, it's an amendment to some spending where we overspent in one department. And what we've done is we've adjusted the money from. Other departments to put into this, so we're not actually adding money to, to the budget itself. We're pulling money from other departments to cover the overspending that went on in the police department. Is where it was. And actually, it decreases the original budget number.
It does. By a little bit over five hundred thousand dollars. So we also did not see as much revenue come in this year, and so we adjusted that revenue as well, to show that accordingly.
And that was projected revenue, so this is the. Without doing that on three readings, this is the only way we can get it changed. In a hurry, so we can go continue on into the new budget here. This, this is, this was the budget was generated for, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, which we did not have any say in it at that time. Any questions? Uh, have a motion to go ahead and then, and we'll discuss the changes after this. But to move forward with an emergency reading for a budget amendment. Ordinance eight sixty-six.
I'll make a motion.
On the second?
I'll, I'll, go ahead.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Hey, Marie, you wanna go into detail on what you did?
So the first three pages, um, identifies everything that was changed and it will show you exactly. Uh, how much was changed, whether it was a negative or a positive. So applying that to our ordinance. Start reading that, we'll have to read all the others out. Um, ordinance number eight sixty-six, an emergency ordinance to ensure provided any time necessary to finance the twenty-twenty-two. Of the twenty-twenty-three fiscal budget of the town of Saratoga, Carbon County, State of Wyoming. Be it ordinance or governing body of the town of Saratoga, Carbon County, Wyoming. Section one, the amount of general revenue necessary to be raised for municipal purposes. And to meet current expenditures of the town of Saratoga, Carbon County, State of Wyoming. During the fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-two to July to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Is hereby fixed at the suitable levy on the town of Saratoga assessed valuation. Section two, that for the general fund of said town. There be levied a suitable tax of eight mills on all real and personal property in the town of Saratoga. Subject to taxation for the purpose of raising the sound of a portion of the appropriation, which includes other anticipated revenue changes. Income for operation and maintenance of the general fund. Section three, general fund and assumed revenues and income. Taxes, two million, four hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Likes licenses and permits, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Intergovernmental revenue, five hundred and eighteen dollars. Five hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-five cents. Parking for service, sixty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Funds and forfeitures, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Miscellaneous revenues, fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Contributions and transfers, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Full anticipated general fund revenues, three million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. Anybody else want to?
What, uh, what do you consider miscellaneous revenues?
So, um, fingerprints, uh, notaries. Um, section four, that for the enterprise funds, uh, the following sums of money is hereby appropriated to defray the expenses from the general fund. For the appropriation of the total of the enterprise fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Impact fund, seventy thousand, fifty dollars. Airport fund. Uh, one million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. Water fund, nine hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. Sewer fund, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. We didn't pass, seventy-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eight cents. Nine-one-one, fifteen thousand dollars. Specific purpose tax, two million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. Total anticipated enterprise revenues, five million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eight cents. David? Thank you.
Section five, anticipated expenses and dispersment of the general fund. Uh, town hall administration salaries, payroll, benefits, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, sixty-nine cents. General expenses, five hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-two and forty-eight cents. Planning salaries, pay, payroll, benefits, twelve thousand. General expenses, nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty. Municipal court, salaries, payroll, benefits, ten thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. General expenses, nineteen thousand, five hundred. Police department, one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight and thirty-four cents. Total salaries and payroll benefits, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and ten cents. General expenses, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven and twenty-four cents. Volunteer fire department, total sixty-five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and eighty-four cents. Payroll benefits, eight thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and eighty-four cents. General expenses, fifty-six thousand, five hundred. Street department, total nine-seven-two, six-three-seven and ninety-nine cents. Salaries, payroll, benefits, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. General expenses. Five hundred and ninety-nine thousand and five hundred. Swimming pool total, eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Salaries, payroll, benefits, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. General expenses, fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty, fifty dollars. Hot pool total, sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollar, eighty-six dollars and eighty cents. Salaries, payroll, benefits, eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixteen and eighty cents. General expenses, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy. Saratoga League, total sixteen thousand, seven hundred. General expenses, sixteen thousand, seven hundred. Parks, hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine, uh, nine hundred and ninety. General expenses, hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety. Recreation department, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, thirty-three and six cents. Salaries but payroll benefits, eighty-nine thousand, thirty-three dollars and six cents. General expenses, forty-five thousand. Immunity center total, forty, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred. Salaries, payroll, benefits, a hundred and eighty-one and nine hundred dollars. Uh, general expenses, sixty-seven thousand. Transfer to reserves, zero dollars. Total anticipated expenditures of the general fund, three million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five. And twenty cents. Total excess revenues above expenditures of the general fund is zero dollars. Uh, do you want me to continue, Marie?
Let's see.
I'll, I'll finish her out. Uh, section six, anticipated expenses and dispersments of enterprise funds. Impact funds, transfers to reserves, uh, let's see. Impact funds, uh, transfers to, the total is seventy thousand, thirty-eight dollars. Transfer to reserves is zero dollars. Airport fund, total, one million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. Um. I'm off one, let me see. Capital projects, sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Transfer to reserves, one million, six hundred and four, six hundred thousand, six hundred and four thousand.
That's. Sorry, we're.
Nine fifteen, yeah, it's kinda off.
We're off one. So general expenses have been sixty-seven thousand.
Okay.
Capital projects, okay.
It's, alright, thank you. Transfer to reserves, zero dollars. Water fund, nine hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-six. Salaries, payroll, benefits, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one ninety-three and fifty cents. General expenses, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five oh-two and fifty cents. Transfer to reserves, zero dollars. Sewer fund, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred. Salaries, payroll, benefits, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three and fifty cents. General expenses, three hundred and fifty-four thousand. Uh, and six dollars and fifty cents. Transfer to reserves, zero dollars. We didn't pass seventy-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, sorry, seventy-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight and eight cents. Weed salary, payroll, benefits, sixteen thousand, two hundred and fourteen and forty cents. Pest salaries, payroll, benefits, eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three and sixty-eight cents. Weed control expenses, fifty-six hundred dollars. Pest control expenses, forty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty. Transfer to reserves, zero dollars. Nine-one-one funds, fifteen thousand dollars. Specific purpose tax, two million, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Three hundred and twenty-seven, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Capital projects, two million, three hundred and twenty-seven, uh, and a hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Transferred to reserve, zero. Total anticipated enterprise expenditures, five million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eight cents. So like excess revenues above expenditures of the enterprise funds, zero dollars.
Want me to go before, section seven? Section seven, the mayor of the town of Saratoga and the town court are hereby authorized and instructed to certify this ordinance. And to make application to the board of county commissioners of Carbon County, Wyoming. For suitable levy to provide the town of Saratoga with monies for general purposes. Provided, however, that said levy shall not be in excess of eight thousand dollars. Passed, approved and adopted this second day of May, twenty-twenty-three.
Is there any discussion on the amounts of money issue?
That we don't have?
That we don't have? Yeah. Got a motion to accept amended ordinance or amended budget?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? I just have been amended. Okay, we'll move on to the police department, Mike.
We've taken steps to alleviate some of that. Changed our schedule structure, where time is being changed. Any of you heard me talk up here, uh, one of the biggest responsibilities I have is my fiduciary responsibility, that's the one. This won't not happening. That being said, I'll move into my regular stuff here, so, um. And, uh, we had, uh, last couple of weeks, hundred and forty cat calls. Variety of things. One of the things that I think we probably do at some point in time is maybe look at our dog ordinances a little bit. We've had a huge increase in dog ornament or dog calls. Had fifteen calls, uh, this last couple of weeks. Sometimes we're doing two or three a day. Um, so we may wanna look at that too. I mean, dogs get out, I, I'm a dog owner, I'm a lover. But at the same time, if we have animals that are being, you know, that, and a frequent flyer, so to speak. Um, I think maybe we ought to be looking at that a little bit, to make it a little bit, uh, a little bit more stringent. But I certainly don't want to, uh, punish, uh, the person who got their gate left, or, you know, the dog got out, so. Um. Uh, we are starting to enforce our, or pick up our traffic enforcement. Uh, I think we talked a little bit about that on, uh, sixteen citations. That made this last bit. Um, I am in the process, one of the things we talked about, certainly in light of, uh, uh, the opioid things that. Sheriff Bachman already detailed a little bit earlier, uh, we do have a canine that, one of the officers, that when he came on. Uh, he was originally told that he'd be able to run that canine, uh, we've not been able to get that done yet. Uh, we're real close, in fact, I sent Patrick Brady, uh, our, uh, canine lease agreement. Basically, what we would be doing is be leasing, uh, Officer Kastner's canine from him. Uh, in lieu of the, him allowing the dog to work for the Saratoga Police Department. And, uh, and paying him maintenance to take care of his routine feeding maintenance, which would be outside of his, uh. Uh, law enforcement duties, uh, we'd be paying him if we agreed to it. And I'm not really ready to present it today, I just kinda wanna lay the foundation for this, because Patrick's looking at this. We'd be in an additional about six hundred dollars, six sixty and some change, so. When we get that, I would like to, the possibility to maybe talk with you a little bit further and provide you with the MOU. Uh, it's got some legalese, uh, that needed to be put in it, um, you know, governmental immunity and, uh, it was not. And I felt was a real good, uh, help if one of the parties wanted to get out of the contract. There was really not a vehicle in the one that was presented, so Patrick's working on that. Um, so, uh, hopefully the sixteen, I can present you with that, so. Is something that I do think that we would, uh, sort of use, uh, going forward. We are, uh, our intel on drugs and things have certainly picked up. Uh, but this is just one more tool in the box that we could use, so I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you more about that in the future. Um, and I'm glad the sheriff was able to come here tonight. Um, we've been, uh, as you know. Sheriff Police Department runs a dispatch center, uh, and we've got some, a radio equipment, it's many years old now, and it's actually. Coming to the end of its life cycle. Uh, we've had a couple scares over the last three or four months. Where we just pretty much thought we were gonna lose all. Um, ended up being a couple of power supplies, things like that. We were able to get some after parts from the sheriff's office to help get us going. Um, sheriff's office is in the process, actually was in the process of updating their equipment. They actually did the installation. Uh, this last week, uh, they're doing their testing. Uh, I approached, uh, Sheriff Bachman and Sheriff Kelly. And, uh, asked them what they were going to be using with their old equipment, because it is actually the same equipment that we've got in our dispatch center right now. It too is, you know, near the end of its life, but it is in better shape than what we've got, right? Um, so, uh, radio equipment, anything electronic is amazingly expensive. Uh, when I inquired to, uh, the sheriff's office as to, uh, you know, maybe the ability of us being able to get a hold of that equipment. And what it would cost us, um, the sheriff went to, had a conversation with his staff, went to the commissioners. And they very graciously, um, are going to allow us to obtain that equipment. Uh, for a sum of basically ten dollars. Um, we've got an MOU memorandum of understanding that was signed by, uh, the mayor. It was presented to the, uh, commissioners, it's been signed as well, so I think you've got a copy of it in your. Basket as well, so, uh, very thankful for that, uh. Uh, Sergeant Kristen had gone over to the sheriff's office and retrieved most of the equipment, I think there's a couple of odds and ends, but we've actually got it on. Uh, here now, so as we go into the next budget session, we'll be looking at what it's gonna cost to do the programming. And to be able to, uh, we can do two things with that, there's actually two consoles, two radio sets that is in it, we have one presently. Um, so we are actually exploring the options of, uh, putting one set here. And then maybe locating another set a little bit more remotely, there's several places that we're talking about, so. Just in case something happens, I mean, we always try to build redundancy, in case, you know, power goes down, the building gets damaged, something like that, we've got someplace else to work. So, uh, again, Sheriff, thank you very much, and the commissioners for, uh, for, uh, very gracious, uh, allowing us to get this, we appreciate it very much. That's all I have.
Questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
And thanks, Alex. Very, very appreciated. Okay, we'll move on to the fire department. Okay, Captain.
He deserved. Mayor Council, um, likely things have been pretty quiet on the fire aspect for, uh, recently here. Um, we've been doing, we did some trainings, some swift water training here last Wednesday, um, trying to get the guys ready for. Hopefully, not needing, not needing us for, for anything, but in case, case we do. Um, we're just kinda concentrating on helping with, uh. Uh, Mr. Morris, as far as with the flooding stuff, uh, Lenny, you know, if he needs our help with stuff. Just kinda standing by and waiting for orders, I guess. Um, we're gonna be working on the budget, um, probably tomorrow night after our regular business meeting, and then. We can get that turned into you guys and stuff before your guys' next meeting. Um, that being said, we've got our main pumper truck that, um. We found out has a seal that is leaking, going into the, uh, the pump of it. Uh, we got a quote from Wyoming Apparatus for thousand dollars, uh. Thousand twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents, um. I'd like to get, we'd like to get that corrected as, as soon as we possibly could. Um, I don't know if we need to go through one at a time, or do we wanna do them all at once, or what's your plan?
We'll do them all at once.
Okay. Uh, second request is uh for hose, we ended up going through. The um ISO deal. Um, we found out that we needed to have more hose on our pumpers than what we were currently carrying. That being said, that put a short on our extra hose that we had left at the station for um. When we have to clean hose and restocking trucks after calls and so on and so forth. So we got a uh, a uh, request in for um. Some hose to replace all of that that we put on the uh, our other pumpers. Uh, the tune of uh ten thousand, one hundred and fifty two dollars, due Ellen Curtis. Um, and then lastly, we need to get a set of bunker gear for our newest member that we just put on. The department uh full time, uh, that's through our fired up rescues. At the tune of two thousand, seven hundred and ninety five dollars.
What's that included in your bunker setup?
Basically, that is, that is going to be coats and pants.
No boots, no helmet?
No boots, um, it might, it might include, I, I don't know on that one for sure, Chuck.
Okay.
I'd have to look, um.
I was just curious.
I think it's just basically, I think it's, no, it's coats and pants. And it is, we've got helmets and stuff from, you know, past and stuff like that, so. Yeah, it's not cheap. So. If we can get uh, if we can get those things uh bought, we talked to, I think Creed talked to Karina about. You know, everything's budgeted, uh, we should be, should be good in that, that aspect, so.
Mrs. Treasure, do they have it in their budget to cover that?
What's a hose, just one hose cost?
Um, it depends on what size you're looking at there, Gary, um. For a two and a half inch, uh, fifty foot stick of hose, that's three hundred and eighteen bucks.
Well, it's cheaper than I thought, actually.
So, but we're looking some five inch too, and that drives the price up considerably, double, so. Yeah, I, yeah.
The last stand of that, of those.
It depends.
Yeah.
It just all depends, it, because that's, that's something else we get hose tested every year, so, you know. Beware and tear, and if we get one that gets, you know, damaged during the call or something like that, so. Most of the time, it, it, it's, it'll last for quite a few years.
Do they have specs on storage and all that?
Oh, yeah.
Check them out and do regular inspections.
The way they're washed and the way they're dried and.
Any questions? I have a motion to approve the purchase of these items for the fire department.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Jason.
Oh, I'm sorry, I. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Perfect, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the recreation department. Saratoga should make it tonight. Uh, so, it's all on you.
Yeah, it's me. Okay, we'll go with the report, we have a, we're gonna run through quite a few things. For rec department. Uh, let's start with her report, um, she's finishing up some items uh before she's gone. Uh, CCDS number two grant reimbursement, um, that's an awarded grant. She has to regularly submit the supporting documentation for how that's being spent, and she submitted up through the last pay period. So, we'll need to designate who's gonna manage that paperwork documentation moving forward. Uh, the gym schedule and turnover responsibilities, um, she's delegating information, and we're sort of in the process of. Um, reviewing that transfer of ownership of responsibility, so that's an email that's, that's gone out. Hey Chuck and Joe and, and the whole team, so that we can identify what kind of. Um, responsibilities need to be transferred into home, and she's doing her office cleanup, her last day is Monday. Um, we've got some general questions, what will the process be for getting into the facility? Um, there is potential for change in hours, we, we're um, looking at the possibility of allowing members only for now. Until we have um, regular supervisors assigned. Um, who will be the contact for town hall and the community center and all of that, so. We'll get all of that information squared away and then communicate with uh, the community, so people are aware of any changes. And um, right now, we've got a position posted, and we've got to post in more locations. For uh, the rec director position.
Any applicants?
Not that I'm aware of, we've just got the one post in the newspaper, right? So, we need to update in, indeed, and workforce. And um, I can send over more description, we started with sort of a baseline description to, for general information. Uh, the treadmill delivered in December is a lemon, it has had several problems since delivery. Colorado Cardio will be available to upgrade the machine or fix the existing machine on Friday, May fifth. For six hundred and seventy five dollars, this is within the warranty timeframe, but this, the six hundred and seventy five dollars is our travel and labor fee. She wants to request uh that the council. Upgrade to the newer machine for the same cost as fixing the old machine due to the number of problems that we've had with the machine delivered in December. So, we'd like to make a motion to go ahead with the six hundred and seventy five dollar fee and replace. With uh, the alternate, it's actually a repurposed, all of these are repurposed machines, but this is an upgrade. So, um, I'll make a motion now to approve that six hundred and seventy five dollar expense. For her uh Colorado Cardio, so that they can come out and replace the existing machine.
Do I have a second to that move?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, cool. Um, everybody received that pool price list, we all have a chance to look that over, do you want me to read all of it? I can read it.
Hmm, no, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, uh, daily swim rates, children four and under free, children five to seventeen, three dollars. Children eight and under must be accompanied by an adult fifteen and older, children six and under must be accompanied of. In the water with adults or pass swim test. Ages eighteen to sixty four are five dollars, seniors sixty five and older are three dollars. Group rates, ten or more swimmers, children four and under are free, children five to seventeen are two dollars. Children, same rules apply, eight and under must be accompanied by an adult fifteen and older, children uh, six and under must be accompanied in the water with adults or pass swim test. Ages eighteen to sixty four, four dollars, seniors sixty five and older, two dollars, that's for the group rate, ten or more swimmers. Swim passes does not include fitness classes. Uh, the monthly rate for youth, five to seventeen is twenty five dollars, adults eighteen and older, fifty dollars. Couples, seventy five dollars, seniors sixty five and older, thirty dollars. The twelve punch pass for adults eighteen and over is fifty dollars, seniors sixty five and older, thirty dollars. And the seasonal pass uh for youth, five to seventeen, sixty dollars, adults eighteen and older. Uh, a hundred and twenty five dollars, couples, two hundred dollars, and senior sixty five and older, seventy five dollars. The family pass, adults or couples, season price plus fifty dollars per child. After our pool rental fees, a hundred dollars per hour, eighty people or less. And a hundred and seventy five dollars for two hour rental, eighty people or less. Water aerobics fitness class rates, five dollars drop in per class, fifty dollar punch card, which is twelve classes. A hundred dollars unlimited pool fitness classes, a hundred dollars unlimited pool fitness classes, that's a really good deal, that's the one I'm gonna get. Discount of fifty dollars with purchase of season, season pass. Uh, local special for everybody, um, we're sort of planning and moving in that direction, season passes purchased prior to May thirty first. Uh, will receive a discount, adults twenty five dollars off, couples fifty dollars off, seniors fifteen dollars off, and family fifty dollars off. We'll make sure that these prices are, once we pass this. Um, posted for everybody to see, and we'll make sure there's a copy posted down here. Um, this was per request coming in to make. Pool more affordable for locals, we're still gonna gouge the tourists, so. And those changes will be, this is really just an offering for our community members.
Any questions?
Questions? So, I'm gonna make a motion to pass a new price, pool price list.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Nobody? Uh, we're working with Whisper on turnover responsibilities and pool cleanup, so we met today. I'm gonna start meeting regularly with Whisper, she's our new pool manager, um, she's got uh. Extensive background in this type of work, and she's already working on making lists for walking the facility down. And prioritizing cleanup and responsibilities, inventory, identifying um areas where we need to. Make some improvements and also update our equipment. Um, I, let's see, I've got, okay, we've got a list of increase in rates and some other things, so I'm gonna. Um, go ahead with that, we've got a request to hire Samantha Anderson, we have a, uh, an application that was dropped off last week. Um, that's contingent on lifeguard certification, she's a minor, we have to do the backup, um, or the background checks. Uh, like with other employees, starting rate of twelve dollars an hour, so I'll make a motion. To hire Samantha Anderson as a lifeguard contingent on lifeguard certification.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussing. What were the prior lifeguard making last year?
It varied depending on experience, starting as twelve, starting at twelve.
They started at twelve?
They started at eleven.
Yeah.
Last year? They're at eleven. I don't think twelve is a fair rate to start her. Do we need to make an amendment in the starting rates? Um.
Is this advertised at twelve dollars an hour?
I don't think there was a price per hour even included in the advertisement.
Was this negotiated whether it's twelve dollars an hour?
Yes.
I mean, lifeguards, do we have making twelve dollars or eleven dollars an hour?
Mine. Well, per, last year, they actually started at ten dollars an hour, and after they passed their lifeguard certification, they made eleven dollars an hour. Um, so all of them that are in the, to sell right now are at eleven dollars an hour.
Right. So, these people listed here that they're asking for a raise are actually listed as, they're actually making eleven dollars an hour?
No. It's a dollar increase for these people listed here. Because of years of experience.
So they're making twelve?
No, they're making, Jordan's making fourteen, Jada's making twelve. Josie's making twelve, so it's. It's at the next seat for returning uh lifeguards. In Cassell, they're at eleven. Um, and Data's actually at ten right now, because she's an old gym supervisor. We'll have to transfer her position and back to.
And they're all at eleven?
They're at eleven.
Even uh Jordan's?
Um, I'd have to check on him. Well, um, I can clarify. If they're all at eleven, if her justification was a dollar increase, that was my understanding. Because they're second year, because of return. Or third year for trip.
They could be requesting a dollar an hour increase instead of, they're at eleven.
In my opinion. I don't see any reason why we couldn't increase them if they're making eleven now to thirteen. And we don't know what Jordan's making for sure. But, all of them would be making more than the person who's starting for the first time at twelve dollars.
Where does the, the extra money come from?
We have it budgeted in the labor expense for the pool. And we have money available for up to, I think we've got eight to ten lifeguards. The funding for that, and right now, we've got four. One, two, three, three returning, a new one, Samantha. And Whisper will be a lifeguard, and she's actually paid as the. Um, the pool manager, so it's built into the labor cost there. I will say this, that comparable lifeguards everywhere else were paying ours two dollars less.
Than us?
We're paying them, we're paying our lifeguards two dollars less than average in Wyoming.
Well, the rate increase for Whisper, she just completed one.
She start, she was hired at fifteen dollars an hour, and now we're requesting that she get an increase to sixteen dollars an hour, because she completed her CPO training.
But wasn't she hired on the basis of completing three things?
Potentially.
Eight, eighteen dollars.
But it's likely not gonna happen, because that included her CPO, her WSI. And potentially her um, lifeguard training, um, lifeguard trainer training. And that's not likely gonna happen for her WSI until the fall. So, we'll be paying her as of passing this for her CPO, sixteen dollars an hour. She'll get her lifeguard certification, same time Sam does, does, so she would be making seventeen after that.
What's counsel think?
I personally don't see a problem with it, if the pool makes money.
Well, it's not gonna make.
Doesn't make money, it provides. It, it provides, yeah, it doesn't make money, but it provides activity and.
From the budget for it.
Yeah, it's budgeting.
Treasure, is that correct, Bree, you guys, and we've been working on the budget.
Yeah, we, we needed, well, it was, it's not rec, it's pool specifically, and we made adjustments and suggestions based. Labor and benefits, we're not paying labor benefits, standing by right now, down here, so. Um, the money is there.
Basically. But he's getting a two dollar an hour raise. Except for the new girl, and she's hiring on.
She's hiring her at twelve. Bree, I went to grab the budget worksheets.
Okay. Whisper was hired at fifteen?
Yes.
You just wanted to bump their one dollar per hour?
Yeah, for her CPO. Do you want me to go ahead with this?
Yeah, let's, uh, back to this, since we get our budget number, go ahead.
Okay, so pending. That total is Josie, Jada, Jordan, coming back full time, Whisper will be full time. We're looking at hiring Samantha, she has to pass her lifeguard cert, and then she will start. We're still short lifeguards this season. Even with these. Full hires, I mean, it's gonna affect the number of hours that we're in operation.
Okay.
Um, let's see, other activities, Flat Valley, uh, youth soccer. Uh. We're, right now, we're without a rec director, or we will be in a few days. This is typically, um, something that the rec director assists with, and then it's parent volunteer led, so. We'll be providing some, I will probably be providing some updates to. That, that usual, that season usually begins July tenth, just after Fourth of July. So without a director, um, those folks who typically are involved, their kids are involved, those parents who coach and have assisted in the past. May wanna start considering. Um, doing that. Planning that season if that's gonna happen.
Uh, a parent volunteer?
Yeah. And then we've got the Fourth of July Independence 5K and Kids Run. We're co-sponsoring this with the Chamber, Chamber's taking the lead. So Amanda will be doing all of that organization and registration. She'll be the main point of contact for the Fourth of July Independence Run. This year. And we'll be providing some assistance from. Within a committee and some folks, there'll be volunteers within the Rec Commission.
Okay, um. Funding, we providing any?
No.
Okay. Okay. That. My suggestion on the, hopefully we'll have somebody hired by then. On, before July tenth, when soccer starts, but. I would kind of follow the lead of the Rec Board direction on that, you know, as you guys will be monitoring it, so. Uh. You know, if we don't, just in case we don't, then. I guess we wanna continue that program, then parents are gonna have to help step up. That's a good idea, okay. All right, coming back, Marie, did you find what?
So how many lifeguards will be working a day? How many hours will be covered one day?
Well, it's sort of dependent on availability, but typically it's eight hours.
One lifeguard to cover?
No, we need three to four covering shifts. Need three on a shift. Per hour. So we usually cycle out. Two on a lifeguard stand every twenty minutes, and they'll cycle, they'll move from one stand to the next, and then twenty minutes off.
And then how many weeks, um, three months?
That also depends on when the pool opens. Right now, we're working with John and crew. Work, it's all kind of pending. Blood. Because we can't fill that pool empty, start the cleaning and everything until that has been resolved. We're projecting beginning of June, that's what we're looking at, first week of June. So it, that's a variable also, depending on the weather in September. So last year, previous year, we closed super early, but usually by Labor Day we close. Last year, we went, I think, two weeks beyond Labor Day, I think twelfth, the twelfth was our last day. So you're looking at then.
So you have enough, you have less than twenty thousand dollars left, um, for the next couple of months. And so, um, till the next fiscal year, till July, so you have enough, but you. You'll have to in, increase this significantly.
Well, and that's for our last review. The draft review, we wanted to make an adjustment to include that labor.
Um, I will say after doing the budget amendment, um, and going through our books, we need to really, um. Be physically responsible, and we need to cut a lot of our spending because, um. The spending has been really high for the last several years.
For the pool specifically?
For everything.
Right, well, the pool has been neglected for the last few years, so I'll make an argument that we don't have lifeguards, we don't have a pool. So that was the reason we sat through those budget sessions and said, we. Expect or we propose and forecast higher expenses because we need to pay more staff, and we hired a pool manager. Right now. We don't have a rec director, and we don't know how much we're gonna pay that person, but. Our only labor expense at this, after Sarah's gone, is pool manager. And that was. Supposed to be forecasted in that budget.
In the past budget?
In the new budget.
Yeah, but that doesn't, we've got the month of June.
But we've got the month of June, we've got until the next fiscal year begins.
So I calculated the lifeguards, I didn't calculate Whisper into that, and she, she is a part of that too. So dependent on how many lifeguards you have at once. Just.
It sounds like, um, we need to revisit the pool budget then, because no adjustments were made to the budget for this reading. Although we requested. Uh, just be changed.
But that, that's for the next fiscal year. The budget amendment was just to fix for one particular department.
Yeah, I didn't know any, that we were.
Well, we had changes after the budget review. We had additions.
Right, that's for, we're still working on that budget, okay, we haven't had anything.
For next, that's for your new budget, yeah.
So we're looking at the twenty thousand that's remaining through end of June, middle of June.
End of June.
And we're only paying Whisper out of that.
In the life guards.
No lifeguards.
Right, right now, but. The lifeguards will be off of that as well.
Yeah.
Or on that.
So, I mean, it does depend on when we open the pool, so we'll have to look at forecasting for that. And see. I mean.
Yeah, they, we might not be able to show them an increase until after the budget. You see what I'm saying?
I do, but I think we need to look at worst-case scenario, worst-case scenario, maximum number of hours spent in June. How many were, how much were proposing Whisper, Whi- Whisper work forty hours, that was. Um, proposed that she worked forty hours a week. Her, like, when she got her CPO's training and her background checked. Ended up okay, so we're looking at a month at least paying her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And usually when people work full-time, they'll end up getting some overtime as well, just because they come in fifteen minutes early. We fifteen minutes late, or, or whatever the case might be, so we have to calculate that in as well.
We, what we've gotta do then is monitor this out. Until. At least. Okay. There's a whole bunch you gotta play by here. When the pool opens is the big key.
Yeah, and that's something that I can't really, I don't.
Nobody can.
Nobody knows, for sure. Probably, I mean, likely the, the earliest. Her John and his crystal ball is middle of June, depending on the river.
Well. I'm gonna make the suggestion we hold off on the raises. That for Whisper, that was part of her hiring it, you know?
Yeah.
Until we get closer to season starting. Okay? And to see if we can do it, they may not be able to, if we do decide to go with it. They may not be able to get it till after the First of July for the next budget. Till the next budget year, fiscal year. Just since we're that close on months.
Yeah. At the very least, we need to transfer if that needs to be official. Jada from. Her current position as open gym supervisor to lifeguard.
She'll move, was, I was, my understanding is she would move back when the motion was made to lower her weight.
Right.
And when she went back to lifeguarding, we were, she would go back to her, to her normal weight, so she will go back to eleven. But I think we've, well, personally, I think we've gotta leave it there until we see, until we get closer to opening. Because Whisper will pull approximately how much out of it? Through the month of May? Just real quick, around number, two thousand?
Remember that, yeah.
Okay.
At sixteen dollars an hour, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, about, with benefit, well, with payroll benefits, it'll be, I wanna say thirty-five hundred for one month.
For the month, okay. So, so I think we better. Monitor this before we jump in and give, I'm not saying we won't give the young kids a raise, they probably deserve something, but. I feel, we may, it may have to wait till next budget.
It'll be on pay them.
So can we.
Your tip, Ralph.
On what each one of them are current, like Jordan, Jada, Josie, for sure.
At twelve, I know for sure Jada is at, and Josie were at eleven.
As lifeguards.
As lifeguards.
Jordan was at twelve.
I believe so, yes.
I, he was at twelve the year before.
I'd have to look in Cassell.
That's what, I just wanna confirm for sure what their current rate is.
When he was fogging, he was getting twenty dollars an hour, and then when he was a lifeguard, he was making, I believe, twelve, but I'd have to go check. But I know the other lifeguards were making eleven dollars an hour.
I, I just wanna make sure, and I, I can follow up with Sarah and see what the justification here is. I understood that to be just a, a dollar raise based on their returning. So for now, I'll make a motion to increase Whisper's hourly rate from, uh, to sixteen dollars, since she completed her CPO.
Do I have a second?
Second, though.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Close. Okay.
So we'll table the other, I mean, some investigation?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, either that or we're gonna. Wind up right in the middle of budget with another budget shortage.
Yeah. Okay.
Hey. Anything else on the Rec Department?
Uh, yeah, that's Rec Department, do you do the Rec Commission now or later, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I got such new business, and.
Yeah.
Somebody forgot to put on the. Inwell.
I put your post-it notes on top of your agenda.
I'm gonna put it under new business.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to Department of Public Works.
That would be me, um, basically, they've been, uh, cutting out holes, getting ready for pavement. On Thursday, I think it is. When the pavement's gonna start, that doesn't mean that's when the holes are gonna get filled, but they're finishing up the, the lines, they are all connected. They're getting the street ready for pavement, so that should be all buttoned up. Fairly soon, within a month, I would say. At best effort, but, uh. Um, they've been working on getting the hot pool stuff done with the fences and the gates. And. The, uh, they took down the snow fences at parks. Uh. They opened the bathrooms at the lake. And, uh, they finished their ditch project with the culvert up there on Myrtle. And, uh. Then they've been cleaning drains and plugging drains, getting ready for the flood and all that, uh. That should be, I think that's about it. There any questions?
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to, under that, Department of Public Works, real quick. I got with, uh. Lewis and Lewis. The gutter out here, the, busy for a valley pan out here, the center of this driveway's falling apart.
Yeah.
And I think some of it's from stacking snow on it, everything's at best. I got them to give us a quote for putting a valley pan through there, so it'd be concrete or water problems. Uh, I'm going to get another quote, because I thought this one was high, but they gave us a quote of twenty-two thousand fifty dollars. And sixty cents to put a concrete valley pan.
And I'm thinking that's a little high.
Yeah, me too. Considering we didn't pay that much for it, we only paid a little bit more, that's in for old, so.
Yeah.
I thought it was a little bit high, uh, so, uh, we'll move past that, and, uh. So we'll do that, and Marie, just E, E I M G pre-award letter of twelve thousand dollars.
Uh, we were awarded twelve thousand dollars with the grant that you wrote for mosquitoes.
So. I asked for twenty-seven thousand, we got twelve, so. Uh, I'm gonna ask the council if we move forward to continue with the full budget. Uh. Of. I don't have it in front of me, I'll bring it to the next meeting, but it includes area spraying and some other stuff. But, uh, basically, we lost fifteen thousand dollars in the grant, I'm gonna ask council. Uh, well, I'll just ask them now to make up the difference. That we didn't receive from the grant. And we'll make it up out of weed and pests, so we can continue with the budget for mosquito spraying and fogging.
Yeah.
Uh, so if I get a, get a motion to make up the difference.
I'll make a motion.
Twelve thousand, it was twenty-seven thousand dollars and some change.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was what it. Okay, real quick, we'll move on to new business, um.
Best tasting drinking water in Wyoming.
Oh. Wanna take care of that? I'm sorry, I don't drive over it.
We were awarded the best tasting drinking water at the last conference, um. So two of our water and wastewater employees will be, um, going to Washington DC to compete nationally. And also to go to their conference, the national conference as well. So I think it's a pretty big honor to have the best tasting drinking water in Wyoming.
And the employees were?
The employees were Brandon Mistelski and Chuck McVay.
So. And there should be something on the radio shortly, and, uh, there was a little shout-out to them in Saratoga, it seemed. Yes.
Must be terrible water everywhere else. I sure don't think it is.
Okay.
And then we got, uh, under this, we got park maintenance. And interviews were done today, uh, by a couple of council members, uh, do I have a suggestion on who we should award this bid to?
Yeah.
That was in the neighborhood of, well, it was. Ten Chad Mon maintenance for forty-two five. And the other one was Anthony Gonzalez for thirty-six nine six.
I would, uh, I would go with Gonzalez, with Anthony, myself, they're, they're both equally. Experienced and stuff pretty much, and. Uh, and he's seven thousand dollars cheaper. Uh. He'd be my suggestion.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Anthony Gonzalez for our park maintenance.
Yes, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Um, okay. Okay, didn't hear that, and I made a mistake last time.
I know.
Okay. Uh. Leave that in, Department of Public Works, we'll move on to new business, and I have a couple items. Uh, under new business, the cemetery board is going to, uh, have a workshop on the night. Uh, if anybody would like to attend, and what it's gonna entail is they're gonna discuss, uh, fixing the road going into the cemeteries. And, uh. And work on their budget, but they, we were importantly invited to go sit and see what they're doing. Considering there is a cemetery board, but the town of Saratoga owns the land, so. And there had been discussion on rebuilding their road, which may affect part of another road that goes down to the lake, which, uh. We, it'll eventually come back to us on how that's gonna get fixed. Okay? And then I had a request from the gentlemen today. And we're pulling. And we're pulling out some excess dirt out of River Street. And he asked for three loads, two to three loads, and they're gonna put it out at the whistle pit. Uh, and they're gonna have ATV pools. Wait pools, I don't know if anybody's ever been to one, I've only watched the video of them. But they, everything they find that they found out there contains too many big rock. So they was asking if the town could donate, redump, corrupt loans of this excess material they're pulling out of bridge. Do that, all, uh, their proceeds from their ATV, uh, pools. Uh, they plan on having three this year, and all the proceeds will go to the American Veterans Association. Uh, and one of their things they have set up is to go out this year to take a couple of veterans from some, from Wyoming. Is my understanding, and assist them in getting to Washington, uh, state for a big, uh, meeting and everything. So, but I thought it was for a good cause, and it's called the Snowy Range ATV Pool. I have a motion to allow them to have two to three loads of excess material off of the bridge. Off the South River Street.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I like.
I'll let you gentlemen know. And then last of all, under new business, you know, we talked about, uh, we still haven't received the quote. But we talked about, uh, the new lift station. And one is a, I asked for a hard quote, instead of an estimate, to pin them down. And to do this, we have, this object has to be engineered and designed because. We are changing the discharge and we have to get a DQ permit. To do this, and they won't even end up paying, replacing anything with that permit, so. Uh, I got, they're on our, um, MOU, and I asked, uh. Associate engineers to give them the estimates on this, and, and they estimated approximately fifteen. Thousand dollars compensation to do this and oversee the lane, setting the new. Uh. Lift station. So basically, do I have a motion, and you guys all have this in your package? Uh, this will be for the design, the overseeing, and getting the permit from VQ. Grab a motion to move forward with this and pay, and have this money ready, available, uh. And they give us, and has been doing things, um, to pay American Associate Engineering for this.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Question, discussion? All in favor? Okay, opposed? Alright. That's all I have with new business. So, we'll move back into reports from boards and commissions, and we'll move on to. Uh, the Community Center Joint Power. It's through Jacob Flute.
Awesome.
Oh.
I don't have anything to report, we meet again May four-thirtieth at the Community Center.
Okay.
Now it's Jacob.
Now it's Jacob.
All I have is, um, we had a workshop again last week. And we're still working on ordinances and trying to get hard numbers for the. Tap fees and all of that pinned down so that we can get all of our ordinances updated. And, uh, a little easier to. Uh, have to jump around to find everything. Um, and our next meeting will be the tenth.
Okay, on to, uh, the Planning Commission meeting. McCall, do you have something?
I had one since.
Well, do you have anything from the Planning Commission? Updates, anything? Marie, you do have some on that, could you put it in our packet, what's that about?
Oh, um, I put the O B consulting draft agreement on your packet. I believe McCall has sent that to YDOT for their approval, um, and that's. Um, that includes their scope of work, their fees.
McCall, did you get a copy of this?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't realize this was on the end of the day. Um, I assumed that once we have approved from YDOT, that we present that as a contract for you, so.
Yeah, but you weren't aware that they sent over, you, the agreement, yes, but not approval from YDOT.
You don't have any approval from YDOT yet, so it's then to YDOT for their approval, and then once they approve it, you prove it as.
Whiteout is coming down when?
Thursday.
Thursday, there's, yeah, and so we'll get everything ironed out there. On how to proceed forward with this, there, there's some guidelines that have to be followed. And, uh, how did, yeah, question, the grant was for two hundred thousand? There didn't come in for two hundred thousand?
So the total was two hundred thousand in, in the ten percent match from the tower, and the grant is for. Like a hundred and eighty, something, like nine point eight percent.
If they hit it on the head, there'd be a full two hundred thousand. Pretty interesting.
I'm sure so. That, that number was published in the Saratoga Sun, so it looks, I mean, technically, they weren't supposed to know, but it was.
Kind of interesting, though, I, you know, I think they'd come in a dollar list. Okay, alright, so anything else from you, McCall? Do you understand that no money can be spent on this project until after the next budget year? Until we go into July.
Um, I did not understand that because it's, I thought that it was budgeted in our, it was budgeted in the previous.
It is not in a line items, uh, correct?
So, the almost twenty thousand was budgeted, but. Uh, after having a conversation with YDOT, they said we were supposed to budget the full two hundred thousand, because it's a reimbursable grant. Because we have to pay everything outside.
With that grant, so basically, what we've got to do in that, you know, we had the discussion the other night in the planning commission, that's. We've got to get your budget lines out, because that's how we're gonna be able to pay for that. Because the town's gonna have to set aside two hundred thousand dollars, and then we submit for reimbursement.
Right.
So, it, it may put a damper on when they can start, but there's nothing we can do about that. Uh, that was, that budget was set in stone by the past count.
Right, maybe could you say that we have?
Twenty thousand, basically, there's a line item for twenty thousand dollars. So we could, I mean, if they request. That would be a technical, that would be a lawyer question, I don't know if they can do the work in June and then request payment for. Work done in June and July, I don't think that's legal, I don't know, but that's a question I will have to ask the attorney. Okay, that we've got to break that down, kind of like they broke down their, uh, bid. It'll be broke down like that in their line item for their budget. So when they send it in, so, because we'll have to document all that as it goes back to YDOT for our reimbursement. That's why it's so critical that Marie is involved with this, because she will request reimbursement. So. Anyway, so that's where we're at on that. That, that just actually, that's one reason why you didn't come in, and you were out of town, you were in Larry's rest, a meeting. So, but we can, we can further address that as we go, I will talk to the lawyer about that. Okay? Uh, okay. Now, we'll move on to, in that, we have, uh, three letters of interest to join. The, uh, Planning Commission, and I didn't believe that it was advertised for the right amount of time. Marie said it was, we have to do it, uh, uh, fifteen days, and it is, so. Uh, Marie, if you want to read the three names and the letters of interest?
So the first letter of interest is Nancy Ford, and we did read this letter at the council meeting. Uh, do you want me to read it again?
Uh, do I have a, a motion to approve Nancy Ford, and then I'll appoint her to the Planning Commission?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, welcome aboard, your next meeting is the ninth? Yeah, next Tuesday. Okay, the next letter of, uh, Marie has listed is from Johnny Portello. Uh, would you please read his?
He's down here.
Okay. Uh, dear Mayor Davis, I would like to be considered for the vacant position of the Planning and Zoning Board. My name is Johnny Portillo, I live at two thirty Condit Court here in Saratoga. I was employed with K Star Gas for thirty-six years in Rock Springs before my retirement and moving to Saratoga. Working for the utility with K Star, I sat on the Rock Springs Board of Adjustments. This involved homeowner requests for additions to existing homes, new standalone garages, et cetera. Being an employee with K Star helped to assist the homeowners in regards to existing underground utilities. On their property that may be in conflict with their proposed construction project. I was knowledgeable of city ordinances as they applied to setbacks, et cetera. The board would review these requests, go and research the proposed, proposed construction site, and submit direction based on our findings. I'm a snowbird, which I leave, leave Saratoga approximately from mid-October to end of April. Uh, with today's technology, in the event something needs reviewed, Zoom meeting via the computer is an option. Sincerely, Johnny Portillo.
Uh, and he was, it's probably my bad, uh, mistake that he's not here tonight. Would have probably come up by the asking, but I, like I said, I didn't think we had advertised long enough, so that was why I did not invite him. Uh, but, uh, I've spoken with him on the phone, I think he'd be, uh, plus two, and I would like to appoint him to the. Planning Zoning Board.
How many positions are open right now?
Three. We lost, uh, Schwartz, Mr. Schwartz.
Potential, potential fourth, I think Mike is looking to resign. Hasn't officially yet, because we've just lost three people.
Yeah.
Like he's, his business is taking him elsewhere, so he, I think will resign, will be. But officially, right now, we just have three vacant for us.
Okay. So I would ask for a motion for me to appoint, uh, Mr. Portello to the joint, or to the Planning Commission?
I'll make a motion.
Down a second? All in favor?
I like.
Opposed? Okay, I will notify him tomorrow. And then our last letter, letter of interest coming to the day. Uh, it's from Chia Valdez, Marie?
Mary, how's it going, please accept this letter by high level?
Wanna read it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, just wait a few minutes. You have, you have to come here to the podium.
No, I will, but you might, oh.
You can use mine.
Okay, thank you. I, I just can't remember what I wrote. This one does. Mayor Councilman Chia Valdez, um, third generation Wyoming girl, been here since two thousand ten, and, uh. As I'm here and I've been through and I noted in this, I, I've lived through three to five different mayors and council people and. All the different things that have happened in this community, and part of my education is all about, and I'll just read what I. Uh, it's all sort of certified accreditation, designation, land fundamental brokerage, land one-on-one, land investment analysis. Transitional land real estate subdivision, subdivision land development, recreational land development, real estate mapping technologies. Tax deferred ten thirty-one exchanges, agricultural land, uh, brokerage, in addition to subdivision land development education and fifteen years of. Uh, on the ground practical experience, I also have a designation of resort and second home property. Uh, and a, which is R S P S, and a S R E S, Senior Real Estate Special Designation. So with all this, I just feel like that I can contribute to. Fact that everyone's coming into our community out of stators, out of control stuff, and we have, we, you know, need some kind of. Of, well, knowledge and information of what's happening in our, our community, what other people in Wyoming are doing, and. That's it, and I respectfully consider you guys to. Saying yay.
Any question? Any questions? No. There's subdivision law that you have here, the law, Wyoming law?
Well, subdivisions apply to, uh, national specifically based in, everything's tailored, it's state oriented, it's. Every state has their specific.
I know, but that's what it says, is it in Wyoming or?
No, it's national. And because I'm licensed in both Wyoming and Colorado, then I have the information.
So you know the subdivision law in Wyoming?
Right.
Okay, just question you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The chair will entertain a motion to appoint, uh, Chia Valdez to the Planning Commission?
Didn't she, didn't she have wait, didn't have the advertised?
It, it's been advertised fifteen days.
Oh.
Okay, yes, it has been, that's what I double checked on, that's why Mr. Portello wasn't here tonight.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chia Valdez to the Planning Commission.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Sorry.
Opposed? Welcome to the Planning Commission. Okay, we'll move on to the Recreation Commission.
Uh, Rec Commission met yesterday, and we're continuing to discuss our event policy and. Uh, upcoming events, um, we started talking about, and I expect that we'll propose a. Suggestion to do a community cleanup day and sponsor that, so I'll have more information at our next meeting on that one.
Perfect.
Um, we have that at our applicant, so I read Emily's letter at the last meeting, and we did reread that, and. Uh, we would like to suggest that we go ahead with the point, appointing, um, Emily for that position for in town. On the, the Rec Commission. So we need to, I'll make that motion, if you'd like, I'll make a motion to appoint Emily Williams to the Rec Commission.
Well, Finn, did we discuss her in here?
Yeah.
I read the letter last time.
Oh, I apologize, I forgot that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was suggested that we go back to the commission and get some approval or a suggestion or. Yeah, we went back to the Rec Commission.
Your Rec Commission has no issue with it?
Yeah, we're all good with it.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve Emily Williams?
Yes.
To the recreation, or the, yeah, the recreation environment or commission, commission. Hey.
You got it.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion, opposed? Okay.
Otherwise, that's alright, otherwise, we, we still have two positions open, so if anybody's interested. Please send a letter to, um, Chuck, and you can copy me, our information, our e, our email.
Best place to send it would be to Marie at the town hall. On my part, no, you and her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so we've got an out-of-town and an in-town position open right now. Um, and otherwise, we're looking at additional events and reviewing what we've got planned with. What we've got planned with our committees for. The run and other upcoming events, so that's about it. Uh, next meeting, it's June fifth, here at six o'clock.
Okay. Uh, the airport board was covered. Ivory Board, their next meeting is May eighth, twenty twenty-three at three PM, here at the town hall. Marie?
Um, with Schwims, the only update, update I have is that we are considering increasing. Increasing the price for personal for ambulance services, the inflation. The rising cost of gas, materials, et cetera, um. And we are charging thirty dollars a person, and so with a six percent increase, we're considering thirty-four dollars a person. Uh, we are still discussing this in our budget workshops, so I will let you know uh, what you decide as soon as possible.
Do. Do we have to come up with a line item for you guys? For next year?
Yes.
So, we need to create a budget spot for you.
There is a line item, yes. And the next meeting is May fifteenth at six PM at the Elk Mountain Hotel.
Uh, I have a question for you guys, anticipating getting any grants or anything like that that will be run through the town? Do we have an idea of what we need to budget for you guys?
For twins?
Yes.
Um, we are applying for, well, we have been trying to apply potential grant for different things. Um, one of the items that we need is an ambulance, we're not asking the town or any town for uh, money on that. We do have the funds for it, the only problem is there's a shortage on ambulances nationwide and so. We can get on the list, but the soonest we can get an ambulance is, I believe, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, true.
And what's our oldest or newest one?
Uh. They're.
Not sure.
Yeah, they're um, needing a lot of maintenance, we've had several ambulances that have. Um, kind of stopped on the highway and so we've had to have them towed, towed to Laramie. Um, so I'm trying to figure out if, if we need to. Putting more money in our budget to. Fix them up more or, or what we can do until we can get anyone.
Who, who maintains them?
Um, we go to Laramie for that, I don't remember exactly. Not a car person.
Yeah.
Anything else? Any additional questions? Comments? Codell, you've said you're patient, say anything.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
You'll be at the next, you'll have to be represented at the next meeting. Okay. Uh. Being none, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn this council?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I am coming to the office tomorrow.
Already.
All in in the morning.
Yeah, last. And I called them and it's time going.